This is an open thing Neptune Township Board of Education. In accordance after two thirty-one public law of nineteen seventy-five. Adequate advance written notice of the meeting was made by posting the schedule of meetings in the main floor lobby of the Board of Education Administrative Offices. And by delivery to the Ethpey Park Press, the Coaster and the Neptune Township Municipal Clerk. Advance electronic notice has been made on the district's website consistent with bylaw zero one six four point six. In order to abide by the Open Public Meeting Act, Board of Education members may use their digital devices to follow the agenda, report out for meetings, and to review agenda background materials, but not to communicate with each other or with anyone outside of this meeting. Fire exits are located in the direction indicated. In case of fire, you will be signaled by bell and/or public address system if so alerted. Please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the nearest exit.
Postings have been placed on the bulletin board for everyone's use. Please do not remove these postings. You may obtain free copies of these documents from the district's website or purchase copies by writing the Board of Education office. During public session of this meeting, parties having comments are requested to address the president. The public is advised that in accordance with bylaws zero one six eight, an unofficial audio recording of this meeting is being made. Pursuing to state statute NJ SA twenty-six colon three D seventeen and Neptune Township Board of Education Policy Regulation seven four three four, no smoking is permitted on Board of Education property. Neptune Township School District is a community all learners where we value opportunity, diversity, and accountability.
Ms. Harris? Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Hubbard?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Ms. McDonald?
Here.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
Madam President?
Ms. Perry?
Please stand with us for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Tonight, we do not have any student government remarks, but we have a showcase being done by the middle school. Would you like us to go out there, Dr. Apoku?
That would be wonderful. We'll go out there.
Good evening, everyone. I will start talking while the board members assemble themselves. In the audience, good evening. My name is Dr. Janelle Apoku, and I'm the principal, the proud principal of Neptune Middle School. This evening, we have a showcase from you from our, from our SAVE Promise Club, which is run by one of our staff member volunteers. I like to highlight the word volunteer, Mrs. Rachel Clark. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Or the students will take care of everything. That is amazing. So we have four students who are going to present to you this evening about a project that they've been working on at the school. And so with no further ado, I will turn it over to my amazing middle school students. Come on over, guys.
Hi, my name is Giselle Morielli.
And my name is Jackson Dordeuson.
We are here on this wonderful evening to share a little bit about what we do as a club and the importance of it.
SAVE Promise Club is a school-based organization that helps create a safer and supportive environment for students. SAVE stands for Students Against Violence Everywhere. As part of the Sandy McPromise organization, our mission is to present violence, bullying, and social isolation.
We do this by empowering students to make positive changes and positive choices and powerful changes. Each month, we conduct a school-wide activity that promotes one of the four E's of the club. Oh, education. Help students learn how to create a welcoming school climate that promotes kindness.
Empowerment. Club members build the knowledge and skill, skills necessary to provide service to their community and school.
Engagement. Engage students in meaningful violence prevention efforts within our school and community.
Encouragement. Encourage, encourage positive relationships within the school to prevent violence. This month, in hopes of bringing awareness to safer schools, we created a tree for students to pledge to keep their school safe. Students added their fingerprint to our tree to show their support.
This activity can help students feel safe by knowing that other students are pledging and giving their all to keep our school safe.
Activities such as this one spread awareness, help spread awareness of the various issues we highlight each month as mentioned beforehand.
It is very important to us that we help all students at Neptune Middle School feel safe, same with the teachers and the staff.
Thank you so much for listening us tonight. Have a great evening, everyone, and we hope this presentation has resonated.
I would like the students to also, while we have, while we have the opportunity to again formally introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about what they do at our school, because all of them are extremely involved at Neptune Middle School are, and are truly impressive students. So we can start with Giselle?
I'm Giselle Morielli. I'm a part of the National Junior Honor Society, and I'm one of the leaders of the SAVE Club. I'm also the assistant editor of the school newspaper and, um.
Hi, I'm Jackson Dordeuson. I am a eighth grade, eighth grader here at Neptune Middle School. I'm also one of the leaders of the SAVE Promise Club. I'm a member of National Junior Honor Society. I'm the treasurer of the student council and a part of, and the editor of the newspaper.
Hi, 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 guys. Um, my name is Genesis Segundo Cruz. Um, I'm an eighth grader here at Neptune Middle School. Um, I'm a member of the National Junior Honor Society, and I'm the president of the student council.
Uh, my name is Amber Snyder. I'm the seventh grader here at Neptune Middle School. Um, I'm a part of National Junior Honor Society. Um, I work on the school newspaper. I'm involved in a bunch of sports and other clubs in Neptune Middle School. Um, and I really enjoy it, like it's due.
I am Kevin Ramirez on the seventh grade here at Middle School and I'm a member of the Junior Honor Society.
Here.
Thank you, everybody, so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Apoku and the middle school students. Chirica McDonald, would you please move our minutes, please?
Thank you.
Can you open the thing yet?
Getting there. Thank you, Madam President. Being resolved that the Board of Education approved the minutes of the work session of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and regular meeting of December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded by Mrs. Thompson. Uh, Roko. Ms. Harris? She's accused. Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Madam President? Okay, we are going to move to our statement to the public, the public forum, and you will hear now from Mr. Tabakin, who is the Board of Education attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on school district issues and has set time aside to permit fair and orderly expression. This portion of the meeting is set aside to permit members of the public to express matters of concern to them regarding school district issues. Public participation is not a public, is not a question and answer, period, and it is not a forum for debate. The Board will not respond during public comment. A response, if any, will be done after the conclusion of public participation. Public participation is governed by board policy. All statements and inquiries must be directed to the presiding officer or limited to three minutes and must observe reasonable decorum. Reasonable decorum is set forth also in board policy. If a participant uses language that is abusive, obscene, intimidating, or otherwise fails to observe reasonable decorum, the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, terminate the statement, or direct the individual to leave the meeting in order to preserve the orderly conduct of board business. Given the recent level of discourse that has been occurring, the Board wishes to clearly state a few items. Number one, the superintendent does not act unilaterally with respect to the budget. Budget decisions are made by the Board of Education in a public setting and during public session. They are subject to state law and audit. Meeting minutes are posted after approval at a subsequent meeting. You just saw the Board approve minutes from the prior meetings. If, um, my, pardon me, I apologize, and that is done in accordance with board policy and law. Allegations of criminal conduct are not supported by any auditor or authority whatsoever. They're not appropriate for this forum and will not be recognized by the chair. Personnel matters, including compensation and evaluation, are governed by contract and personnel laws and are not subject to debate during public comment and will not be responded to. Individuals have the right to attend board meetings, but must observe reasonable decorum. Language that is abusive, intimidating, or disruptive will not be tolerated or permitted. I turn the floor back to you, Madam Chair.
Public forum is now open. Anyone who has a comment may step up to the microphone, state your name and where you're from, or any affiliation that you have with any group. Now open.
Good evening. My name is Paul Zapka, eighty-five Pilgrim Pathway, Ocean Grove. Last year, this community was hit with an unprecedented tax increase. For the last two years alone, you have burdened the taxpayers of this town with a forty-eight percent increase in the school tax levy. For our seniors on fixed incomes and for our young families, that isn't just a budget adjustment, it's a threat to their ability to survive in Neptune. We recognize the reality of the economic climate. We know that the school district expenses are rising, particularly the double-digit increases in healthcare costs and state mandated benefits. But we are here to tell you that it is mathematically and morally unsustainable to simply pass a hundred percent of those increases along to the taxpayers year after year. When a household's healthcare goes up, they have to make hard choices. They cut back on subscriptions, they delay purchases, they find efficiencies. They don't have a tax levy they can just increase and pass along to someone else. We expect the Board to do the same. You cannot use rising fixed costs as an excuse to avoid making the hard cuts needed in other areas. Despite the forty-eight percent tax hike we endured, the district has signaled it will take the maximum ten percent levy, or two percent, excuse me, tax levy increase allowed. Our increases, no. There should be no increase to the tax levy this year. Zero. The onus is on the Board to find the offset. If healthcare is going up, then find an offset. Find it somewhere else to protect the taxpayer. We have already shown you where to look. If you simply match the administrative efficiency of our neighbors with a state average of nine percent, you would find the money to cover these rising costs without touching one single classroom. Finally, we are deeply concerned with the lack of urgency shown by the Board and the district administration. This budget task force, the expanded best budget task force, met once in early January, and we were told it's not going to meet again, the expanded group, until March. March is too late. By then, the budget's locked in. If an eighteen percent math proficiency rating across the district and a forty-eight percent tax hike over two years hasn't created a war room mentality in this building, then the system is broken. The schedule suggests the task force is a formality, not a solution. The county superintendent has confirmed the local control remains with you. That means you're the only ones who can stop the cycle. We demand you reject the maximum levy, find internal efficiencies to cover rising costs, and finally, put the students' academic results ahead of central office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, anyone else would like to make a comment?
I think this one is coming.
Who do you have, Paul?
Hi, Debbie Noler. Um, I'm here to just confirm the date of the budget hearing on the schedule. It's April twenty-ninth. Someone had mentioned it might be the twenty-eighth. Is it the twenty-ninth or the twenty-eighth?
Please state your address. Please state your address.
Oh, um, thirty-seven Cliffwood Drive. I ask, why is that necessary?
We're not, we're going to be responding to questions. We will respond to questions after.
I'm just asking whether my address is necessary to my just.
Because when you come up to the mic, you have to say your name and your address. Don't respond.
Okay. I just want to confirm the date of the budget meeting.
Again, we're not answering questions. You can look online on the Neptune Township's district website. I'll answer.
But there was a discrepancy. That's why I was asking. Um, and I'm just here to say, we're all here to come together and form an alliance, you know, to, to be a collaborative effort, and it's not. And there needs to be a way we could all work to be collaborative with each other, whether, and why are you rolling your eyes?
I'm not rolling my eyes.
Yes, you are.
You know what? I'm not answering. I can't.
Okay, um, but we have to work and see how we can do it collaborative. And just having these meetings that we could come and speak for three minutes is not the answer. We can maybe form other days that we could all meet and try to get together and get some of the questions answered back and forth in a friendly environment. So I, I don't know what the solution is, but we need to come up with something. Cause nothing's going to get done if we keep going back and forth the way it's going now. And that's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Johanna Habeeb. I live at Seventh Avenue in Ocean Grove. I would preface my comments that I served on the Madison Board of Education in Morris County for six years, twenty-fourteen to twenty-nineteen. I was the finance chair for five years. I negotiated two contracts. I brought our district out of the state health plan. More than maybe anyone in this room, I understand what you all are going through and the pickle you're in. So I will acknowledge that upfront. I have been trying to catch up on the issue, and now a full-time resident in Ocean Grove. I, uh, thank you for all the information you put online. It's very helpful. Situation with your buildings is very complicated. I'm sorry to hear about it. Um, my question for you is not to ask you not to take the two percent. I'm asking the Board to commit to stay within the two percent. Assuming that our governor, if the governor's address is on the twenty-fourth, hold state aid flat, which is what everyone's hoping for. It she would in her first month in office. Your preliminary budget will be due by March sixth, so you know already what you're going to do unless state aid changes. So why leave everybody in suspense? Your contract you're negotiating, right? It expires in June. You're in negotiations right now. You should have a good sense of where you are. So why not give the public some insight to where you are? And can you commit to stay with that two percent? And not take any more waivers, because what took us by surprise is the massive waiver that Murphy offered last year, and you guys took the full, full amount. And I'm not debating whether you should or shouldn't, I'm just saying, you understand where we're all coming from. People are looking at the spring selling season and thinking if they get hit like that again, they have to put their house for sale. So we're asking the Board to commit to stay within that and not take more waivers, even if they're offered. Give us a break. Give us a little time to catch up. The other question I have is, I didn't see in any of your documentation any work on shared services with the township. Assuming you have a shared services committee, I don't know if that offers savings. But it's something to ask the borough to help you with. They have almost every role that you have, whether it's payroll, or custodial, or cutting the grass. Is there any sharing that could be done to help defray the costs of the district? They're suffering with health increases, I know as well, but just asking that. And I follow Senator Gavals' comments all the time. They are very good. But I don't understand how the formula's gotten so skewed here, because when I look at your school performance report, our numbers are a lot more like Keansburg than Wall or Ocean, which is what you're comparing. There's our demographics, right? You have fifty-plus percent economically disadvantaged, right? I couldn't quite, wasn't quite sure how many ELL, but you have a lot of demands on your system. It's a lot more like a district like Keansburg, which gets twenty-five million in aid, or like Long Branch. You guys are getting, what, eight? Ten? So I don't understand. It feels like, almost like the formula is incorrect to see such a big swing. Is it the, and I wonder, is it because the property values in two parts of town are so high that it's somehow skewing the formula, right? Cause you have the Grove and Sharp River Hills, which multiple million dollar homes, and then the rest of the town is more moderate. But I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Giovanna Zacataco Daniels, sixteen Cornell Avenue. I am here tonight alongside my peers and concerned community members regarding some vile comments made by a Neptune Middle School staff member over this past weekend. I firstly want to thank Dr. Crater for addressing the matter promptly. I spoke to her over the phone. But I am here tonight to remind you all that anti-immigrant sentiments have no place in our schools. I was once a young child of immigrant parents that did not have the tools or the coping mechanisms to deal with the complexities of my family situation. I once was that young girl who could not stand up for herself. But today, the young child in the video that we have all seen has been traumatized for life, but she's not alone. We have all been front and center to the atrocities committed by ICE and by those that stand with their hate-filled narrative. Therefore, as a taxpayer, we, I ask that that staff member be terminated. Neptune Schools have the duty to restore the immigrant community's trust and make our schools a safe haven for all children and families. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Eric Meyer, eight Olive Street. Um, I want to start out first by asking about what the plans are to get the tax situation under control. Um, you know, a lot of people, as you can see, we come here for the school board meetings and we don't hear solutions. This has been going on for quite some time. Um, you've had time to prepare for these burdens, and it's really unfair and unjust that you throw them at us. Um, you know, I've attended meetings quite a number of times already. These expenses are quite a lot, and it just always seems that whenever people come here, we, we ask what is going to be done about it, and we never hear any solutions. I don't, I don't understand why that is. Um, and then to throw it at the taxpayers is not fair either. Um, to many people, including myself, taxation is just another form of thievery or robbery. And I do view it that way. I find that, you know, it's our hard earned money, and it's being taken from us without, without our consent. I do not give my consent for you to take something from me without my giving that consent. And yet you do keep taking more and more of my money all the time, and it just keeps getting higher and higher. And last meeting, I asked if anyone can show how that is of any benefit to me personally or anyone. And, and then I got kicked out of the last meeting. I, I don't understand why I was kicked out of the last meeting. I've emailed the Board President, I've emailed the Vice President, and no response. And I asked if somewhere in the minutes it can be shown why I was kicked out of the last meeting. And I didn't get a reply. Um, that was not appreciated. Um, also, as far as just with regard to salaries, I think most people would agree, over two hundred thousand dollars salary is, is quite a, a high salary. Um, I know that people have compared it to other superintendents, but it's apples and oranges. We're Neptune. We're not another school district. Two hundred thousand dollars a year is a high salary. And Tommy Crater does not deserve that. She does not deserve two hundred thousand dollars for doing a bad job. And you should all be ashamed of yourselves for keeping her on the payroll, two hundred thousand dollars, to fail the school district and to keep taking our money. It's our money. It's not your money. You should stop taking it. All right? Or find a solution, because this is not right, that you keep doing this to us.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sally Millaway, and I reside at four hundred Helen Terrace. I stand before you as a lifelong resident of Neptune Township, a proud Neptune graduate, and a parent of two Neptune graduates, and a longtime employee, having been a teacher, a principal, and now the Director of Curriculum. I've had a unique opportunity to experience this district as a student, a parent, and an educator, and to witness firsthand the extraordinary work happening every single day. I want to acknowledge the concerns being raised about the recent tax increase. No one welcomes higher taxes, and those concerns deserve to be heard with respect. At the same time, I feel compelled to speak in support of a district that is too often being reduced to a single narrative, one that does not reflect the full truth of who we are or what we do for our diverse student population. This district serves a student population where approximately sixty-three percent of our students come from low socioeconomic backgrounds, including a significant number of multilingual learners. Yet despite the challenges that come with poverty, mobility, and language barriers, our schools continue to provide opportunity, excellence, and pathways to success. Recently, our district has been labeled as a failing district based on state assessment results. While we do not dismiss this data, and we acknowledge that it's concerning, it is not the whole story. We are challenged by chronic absenteeism and student transancy, factors that significantly impact test performance, but are not matters of instructional quality, staff dedication, or student potential. What the data does not capture is this. Eighty-nine percent of our top-ranked students have been with us since elementary school. An award-winning ROTC An award-winning ROTC program, an award-winning a cappella group, being above the state average in students earning the seal of billy literacy, graduates being accepted into Ivy League schools and other well-respected universities, 61% of students taking AP courses to earn college credit, high school students participating in dual enrollment courses earning college credit, students enrolled in Poseidon, our early college high school, where first-generation students earn an associate's degree at the same time as their high school diploma, shared vocational programs gaining real-world skills, a phlebotomy program leading directly to full-time employment. Our schools are meeting the growth targets established by the Department of Education, demonstrating that our students are learning and progressing. These are not the outcomes of a failing district. They are the outcomes of a district that believes in opportunity, access, and growth, even in the face of significant obstacles. It's also important to say this plainly. Many of our loudest critics have never stepped foot in our schools. They've not observed our classrooms or seen the dedication of staff who show up every day to meet students where they are and move them forward. Investment in education is not just about buildings, programs, or data points. It's about people. It's about ensuring that every child, regardless of circumstances, has access to meaningful opportunities. That investment requires resources, staffing, and sustained commitment. As someone who has watched this district grow students into college graduates, skilled professionals, service members, and contributing citizens, I believe deeply that this community gets a return on its investment. Our schools are not perfect, but they're purposeful, resilient, and really powerful.
Sir, sir.
Sir.
Please, please.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, Sulu Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm coming here to hopefully help out some misinformed people in the audience. 60% of your taxes, anywhere you live, goes to your school district. 60%. No matter what town you live in, no matter if it's shared or not, it goes to educating your kids. That's the deal that you signed. But also, you're complaining at the, the level of it that has no responsibility for it. If you hit simple Google, you'll see what goes on with pilot programs. 95% of it goes to the municipality, not the school district. It skips the school district. That 60% that you pay does not go to the school district. But yet, it, it, it hurts it. And what you say, a pilot program? The Ocean Grove redevelopment program is a pilot program that payment in lieu of taxes, right? Shark River Can, um, Shark River Canal is a pilot program that doesn't go towards your taxes, right? None of that goes towards your taxes. In fact, that pilot program helped Neptune balance and decrease their budget for this past year. But what made it go up? Another program that the county goes to that none of y'all send in these meetings, the ADP, the pro, um, program, where all of it goes to the county. Now, I think y'all need to do some simple research, because this, I already knew this, but this was simple Google so I can get direct pilot programs and names of things, right? Y'all, at the bottom of the barrel, they make no decisions on your taxes. And when that S2 program that assessed, the lady spoke about it earlier, that assessed, hey, your town is now worth way more money because of redevelopment programs in Ocean Grove, because of Shark River. It's now worth way more money. So we're gonna cut $25 million in less than 10 years, right? And then at the same time, that same government entity, your District 11 Assembly, who sits ahead, our Senator Gavals, sits the head of education.
Please present your comments.
I apologize. Senator Gavals, who presents the head of the educational board for the state, who is his, his districts were cut the most, Neptune, Asbury, Freehold, right? Were cut the most, has not addressed this issue. They know the plan is flawed. They're pushing you to say, hey, consolidate. Nobody wins, because 60% of your taxes still will go, you'll just have less say. You're sitting in the wrong meetings. You need to sit in people who can actually make legislative change to help you, right? The reason why your taxes went up this year is because the county and that program that's only in Mammoth County said, hey, we're gonna reassess your property every year, and we're gonna tie it to market rate. Y'all need to sit up here and not buy into the lies and misinformation. It is simple to find. It is a Google search. Please, stop coming here and actually help them. Because again, I, I said at the time, at the same time they're cutting you, they're saying, hey.
Your time is up. All right. Anyone else?
Hello, Tara Samuels, 1528 Eighth Avenue. Tara Samuels, 1528 Eighth Avenue in Neptune. I'm just here to respond and let you guys know. I say it on and on, I have a daughter of Neptune. She's one of the stars on the road. She plays all sports. We won championships with her, and she's just not good at championship, but she's good with the books as well. I understand everybody is upset, but like she said, there's a lot of development going on. I'm paying taxes. You know, a lot of people, it's just not Ocean Grove, it's just not Shark River. A lot of other people own their own houses. And you know, I just hate the fact that people constantly put our students down. My daughter was just in the paper about being one of the fabulous basketball stars, and someone commented and said, can you read? To my daughter, that, that hurt me so bad, that every time you turn around, someone is humiliating our kids, and now my daughter as well. If you look on the press, you'll see somebody made a comment with a fake page and asked, can she read? Why would you say something like that? I would never humiliate anybody's children, no matter what color they are. I love the babies. Everyone knows I do a lot for the community, for our kids, no black, white, all of them. And that was very humiliating to me with my daughter, how much she puts into Neptune and how much she loves Neptune as well as I do. I just want to say that was very ignorant to ask, can my daughter read? Because if anyone know, when you play sport, you have to have a certain type of average to play any sports. You know, I put a T-shirt, I'm, I'm Team Lana. I'm a supportive mother. I work every day. I work hard. I'm on her education. I have two children that's well-educated, college graduate. You know, not everyone here is, as they would say, is dumb. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm really upset as a mother, as a parent. You know, I think the board is, maybe not to you guys, but the board is beautiful to me. I see everybody at this board, I see them at the basketball game, I see them at the football game, and they supporting our kids, letting our kids know, listen, you, you might have came from a bad background, but it's up to you to make your life what you want to make your life. And the support that you guys give my daughter as well, hands-on. But for someone to ask, can my daughter read in the Asbury Park, that humiliated my daughter. And it humiliated me. Thank you.
Anyone else?
In the back.
Hi, good evening. My name's Paul Owens, I'm at 21 Atlantic Avenue in Ocean Grove. My background, I'm a physician, and I was a part of the senior team, I was chief, chief medical officer at one of the Atlantic Health Hospitals. And in that position, I think there's an analogy to what, what I hear going on with the school board and, and the parents' interpretation of how that may or may not affect their kids. And similar to the schools, I think that there are many dedicated, committed people who are at the front lines, trying to do their best with, with the students. And, and I don't find fault with, with any of those teachers. That's not why I'm here tonight. I think that we had a tough job. You know, we had the same thing. We had doctors, nurses, techs all at the front line. And we always said that as administrators, our job was to put them in a position to succeed. And how do we, how do we make people at the front line succeed? You know, a lot of times it has to do with listening to what they say. But we, but it was important to have benchmarks and to have targets and goals to, to try to achieve and to get the team to be working towards those goals. And, and I think there is an, an analogy there with, with what we're trying to do with some of the scores and things like that in the town. I had the good fortune to speak to someone who was involved in, in the school system, Neptune school system, about 10 years ago. And he was very proud of some of the new programs and the things they were able to do with the students at that time. A lot of the programs that were referenced tonight with the college, getting some of the high school kids into colleges, the, you know, people were coming from surrounding districts to Neptune, you know, which really is something to be very proud of, you know? And in something that I think could certainly be achieved again. So I, I want to encourage the administrators in the job that they have to do to try to put the teachers in a position to be successful. As a taxpayer, I would also like to help in any way I can. And in prior meetings, Dr. Crater mentioned that he was going to be transparent with the budget process and that we needed to be at these meetings and paying attention, especially this time of year, so that we could better understand what was going on with the budget and the line items and things like that. I know you said that you have an article in The Coaster frequently, and I've been waiting for some sort of an announcement or some sort of a place where I could start to analyze that as well. I think many other people are as well. There's a lot of talent in the town, and I think, you know, it's, it's good to try to open up a task force to, to try to address this. But I do think we need to get more representation from people that have that vested interest as taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Gerald Maglio. I'm here on something completely different. I do want to say that you have some wonderful students that made the presentation.
Excuse me? Could you get your address?
Oh, yes. 309 Prospect Avenue, Neptune. I'm the director of the Dolores Turco Foundation, and our mission is to protect children from abuse, neglect, and exploitation. So we believe every human being, every person is created in the image and likeness of God, and therefore we do not discriminate against anyone for any reason. But I'm here to ask you to repeal policy, transgender policy 5756, because it violates parental rights. It's completely inconsistent with the research. It's very harmful to children. I sent you some extensive research on this, and I'd just like to highlight a few points. The Florida Attorney General has sued the World Professional Association of Transgender Health, the Endocrine Society, and the Academy of Pediatrics, exposing their deliberate lies and colluding to suppress truthful studies that contradict their claims, because they are out to make billions of dollars off the backs of innocent children, when there's no credible evidence that medical interventions for gender dysphoria actually alleviate the condition. These groups embarked on a campaign to con patients, insurance companies, regulators, and judges by colluding a scheme of their own clinical guidelines, recommending chemical and surgical interventions for children that are irreversible and cause mutilation of children. And to ensure their scheme, they used, they adopted fear to intimidate patients, instructing doctors worldwide that these confused children were exponentially higher suicide rates if they didn't, were not allowed to transition them. And every credible study showed that gender dysphoria almost always resolves itself once a child gets through puberty. I just wanted to point out a couple of other things. The US Supreme, and also this has to do with, but this policy violates parental rights. They can transition children without parents knowing or their consent. And the US Supreme Court upheld parental rights in a decision that rules parents cannot shut, uh, uh, schools cannot shut parents out or disregard their religious obligations for their children. They have the right to know what children are being taught at school and to opt out of anything that is diverse ideological or goes against their values or religious beliefs. The Department of Education adopted policies in the past year that there are only two genders, male and female, and again, parents have the fundamental right to direct the upbringing and education of their children, and allowing men to compete in female sports dangers. That's my three minutes?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Jennifer Ziverson, 420 Valley Road. And until you have raised a transgender child, I don't want to hear anything. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kim Lindley. I'm from Manalpin. Dear Neptune Board of Education members, good evening and thank you for all you do for the students of Neptune. My name is Kim Lindley, a mom, former teacher, taxpayer, and Manalpin resident. Tonight, I would like to speak on the rescinding of policy 5756 as well. As we all know, the school board policy is quite controversial today. In the many school districts already, some have abolished the policy 5756, and Koltznek has adopted parental rights policy. Now these schools can concentrate on learning. Policy 5756 is a school board policy that is diverse, diverse the family unit. This policy creates division within the school community. A student is allowed to change their gender identity without parental authorization. If a student identifies a different gender than the school, is required to now recognize them with their new name and new gender. A separate file is created for the student. The parent is not made aware. The school social worker stands in lieu of the parent if they are not accepting the new gender identity. A gender-affirming plan is created within the student. Again, parents are not notified. Students determine when the parents will know. Parental authorization is required for distribution of aspirin, school trips, and for pictures of students to be taken. How does policy 5756 make any sense? One key element that a teacher strives for is clear communication lines with parents. It has been proven that when the teacher and parents work in tandem, that the student is the ultimate one to benefit. Students who have parental involvement tend to have the less behavioral problems, less absenteeism, and more involvement in school-related activities. Getting parents involved in schools by the center of the comprehensive school reform and improvement is just one article that encourages parental involvement. When teachers have parental involvement, they benefit as well. These benefits are of clear communication lines with the parents, or less homework problems, less absenteeism, more precious time teaching than addressing behavioral issues. How can there be true communication lines between 5756? Policy 5756 breaks trust between the parents and the teachers. Why and when would a parent believe a teacher when they don't know if they're hearing the truth? The harassment, intimidation, bully policy is already in place for protection of students when in need. Please rescind policy 5756 so we can focus on learning. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Kim Lindley. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Mason, 105 Cardinal Road here in Neptune. So I've been attending the meetings since last summer, and I want to change what I'm trying to say tonight. I don't want it to be an us and them feeling in this room. We all have the same needs. We all want the good of the students. We all want to do what's right for the community. I believe more transparency is needed with this board. As one of the other members said, it is January, almost February in a few days, and we really don't know what your budget looks like yet. I'm sure you have an idea. We need to know to understand. Many of the people in this community are seniors. I'm included. We have budgets like you do. We need to know what our future is going to be. We can't wait till April to be hit with these things again. And I know there's cuts that you can make to make it more affordable for us, the taxpayers. We are the ones paying the salaries. We are the ones supplying all the, the needs of the community. We're the taxpayers. We need to have a respect coming from this board. We want to respect you. As this mother said, no student should be demeaned in this community. I agree with her 100%. I know there are great teachers in this school system, because I know many of them. I come from a family of teachers. I respect teachers. Many of them probably should get a salary increase. Maybe other administrative people should get less salary. I don't know. I'm not working in I'm not working in the system. But there are answers to all of these questions. And I believe you're an intelligent group of people. I believe with community support, there's a lot of smart people in this community coming from all kinds of backgrounds that can help you in many of the areas that maybe you're not 100% okay with, or maybe you need some help. Please, reach out. We are a community of smart, intelligent people. We love Neptune. We want to stay here. But many people are going to lose their homes this year. That's a fact. They are going to lose their homes because they can't afford the taxes. And if there's another increase like this one, it'll be even more. And then where are we? Less people paying more money? That's broke. That's not going to work. Thank you. Please consider these requests. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Katie Allegra, and I live at 133 Third Avenue in Neptune City. And I'm proud to serve as the president of the NTEA. I want to take a moment tonight to say how truly proud I am to work in this district. That pride comes from the dedicated, hard-working educators who show up every day for our students and from the remarkable students we teach, that we are fortunate to teach, I'm sorry. Our teachers go far beyond their job descriptions. They plan, reflect, support, and adapt, often behind the scenes, to ensure that every child feels safe, valued, and challenged. Their commitment to this district and to its students is unwavering, and it is evident in the classrooms, the hallways, and the school communities they build. We are equally proud of our students. They are curious, resilient, and full of potential. It is a privilege to work in a district where students are educated, where students are supported academically, socially, and emotionally, and where their growth is the center of our work. As we move forward, I hope we continue to recognize that the strength of this district lies in its people, our students, and the educators that serve them. When we support and value our teachers, we are directly investing in the success of our students and the future of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Dan Finney, Coltsneck. I've been speaking up for children who cannot speak for themselves after going through months of debate in my former district, then my current district, and then where my wife teaches regarding policy 5756. Thankfully, all three of those districts have rescinded the policy, along with many other districts. Having friends here in Neptune, I hope what I have to share will be helpful as you discern fact from fiction, truth from emotion, education versus indoctrination, and the proper role of public education versus parental roles, authority, and responsibility. I would like to share a compilation of about 20 reasons why this policy is problematic and should be rescinded. Please consider the implications and tangential effects. Over the last several years, my kids, before I get to the list, have experiences and observations that were very concerning and telling, I thought. And just a couple examples. One of my kids came home and said, "This is ridiculous. Why are the adults pretending this is normal?" My friend said something about biology, that there are only two genders, and he got called to the office for bullying. And then another, another child came home complaining because they were handing out purple pins, and he said, "I didn't want one, but everyone else was wearing them." And the last example is, "Why are they letting the boys go in the girls' bathroom? They are just doing it because they can." I'll just preface the more specific reasons listed below with a few words that characterize this policy: divisive, delusional, confusing, vague, unscientific, undermining, and unhelpful. So I'd appreciate if you could read, consider these thoughtfully. If there's one you don't agree with, does that diminish the weight and gravity of the others? I wrote this list because some were being swayed by emotional pleas, rationalizations that the implications of this policy are no big deal, or some that just wanted to follow the path of least resistance. So here they are. Because the realities and consequences of affirming feelings-based gender choices are child endangerment under New Jersey state law. Because affirming gender experimentation and expression without any constraint is contrary to New Jersey state law requiring schools to stress abstinence and modesty. Because we should not be lying to kids about something not supported by basic science, the natural world around us, and what is clearly stated in our Bibles. Because there is no possible way to change a person's genetic makeup, the fundamental basis of gender. Affirming the idea of gender fluidity is absurdity. Because these kids deserve the truth from those entrusted with their care and education. Most kids actually know the truth intuitively because we are made in the image and likeness of our Creator. Yet they are being encouraged to embrace a word of make-believe by the very people who are supposed to protect and guide them. Thank you. I'll email the rest of the list to you folks. Thank you so much for your time.
Andrew Muller, 338 Glenmere, Glenmere Avenue here in Neptune. You know, I think Mary went down a pretty clear path here, what we're asking for. We're asking for open dialogue. We're open for, we're asking for collaboration. Some of us are really choking on the tax increases that we didn't expect. And it wasn't just this year. It's been happening since 2019, 2020, probably about 2021. Okay, when I really started to see them drastically increase. Mine have doubled, okay? And yet, we get no answers. And that's where the frustration lies. A woman who got up here, is a former teacher, student, had her kids in school. The facts and statistics that she put out on the table here, I don't know how current they are, but it really doesn't matter. That's the most we've gotten on this district, and it wasn't from you. We've asked these questions. First time I got up, I asked some of those questions. And yet, nothing's ever come back out. This is your forum. You give us the opportunity to speak. But this is your meeting, and we're here. You can take the time to put some of that out. And as we stated earlier, we have a budget deadline looming on us. For us, it's looming on us, right? We're waiting for the hammer to fall, and we're getting nothing. No transparency, no nothing from you. But we come to these meetings. We're told we can't ask questions. Okay, I got it. We were able to make statements. I'm making a statement. Make these meetings a forum to inform the public of what you're gonna do, where we are with this whole situation. We have a right to know before April. And I know everything gets finalized from the town perspective in July. I think everybody here understands that the bulk of every town's taxes are the school taxes. We don't expect it to be the smallest part of the budget. And I don't really like the way that the town operates from a government perspective, but every town does because the school boards are separate from the township committee. There is no oversight. There is no real collaboration on what that school tax levy, that's what, that's what we get, that you hand the tax levy to the town, they combine it with the rest of the budget, and they hand it to us in terms of a tax rate that's applied to our assessments. The assessments could be $10 million. But if the school budget doesn't change, then the tax rate goes down, and we don't pay any more taxes. It's that easy. Math is easy. We get the math. What we don't get is the tax levy and the information of the tax levy coming at us this year and every year. And you have the power in this forum to share that with us and make your case. If you spring it on us in April, you're probably not going to get a very warm reception. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Chatham and Tocatelco, 1410 Seventh Avenue, Neptune. I just have two comments I want to make. I went to Neptune. And when I went to Neptune, there was this transgender girl who committed suicide because she was getting bullied for being transgender. So I feel like the policies you have, being so open and accepting of transgender people is a good thing. And I feel like there's a lot of ignorance that I'm hearing. And I feel like people just need to open up their minds and their hearts to other people. And my second comment is regarding that ICE comment of the middle school teacher. I hope you guys don't sweep that under the rug. It's very vile and disturbing to hear somebody who was supposed to be a safe place for children think that way about somebody. Even if it was a joke, I think that that teacher should no longer be a teacher, and that should be really investigated. And I really hope you guys do something about it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Boy, the air is tight in here. I give you people that came up credit. It takes credit to stand here. And it takes credit for what you do. This is one point, okay? That's my wallet. Taxes take a lot of it.
Identify yourself, please, for the record.
John Ganley, John S. Ganley, 409 Lakewood Road, Neptune, New Jersey, Shark River Hill section. I know a number of the people up here. And I give you credit. But you weren't here when my kids went to school. My kids went through the Neptune school system. Both my cap, both of my children graduated from college with doctor, not doctoring degrees, but they both have two master's degree. So it had to come from somewhere, okay? I know my Italian wife at the kitchen table telling them to do it. But it had to be through the school system that they were in. And for the lady over here, that someone said something about your child, it takes courage to say that and stand up about it. I had the same thing happen to me. I was working a part-time job in a restaurant. Guy goes, "Oh, where do you go? Where do you live?" I said, "Neptune." And he starts laughing. Now, I'm waiting on a table in an Italian restaurant. And he goes, "Well, is your daughter black?" When the restaurant closed, I gave him an answer out in the parking lot. Okay? Famous movie, Cool Hand Luke. The line was, "We have a failure to communicate. We need transparency. We need a break. We need to lighten the room a little bit. What you're doing and what you have in front of you, I would not want. But you would not want my job because for the last 35 years, I've worked with people with severe disabilities to train them, to get them jobs, and to put them out into the public. So I know what you go through and the hoops that you have to jump through. But we need a plan. We need to work the plan. We need transparency for that plan." These people here, I don't want to see them go. I see a lot of them because they all live in Shark River Hills that came up here, over in Ocean Grove. But if we don't get a break and we don't kick the hell out of this, we're not going to be here. We're not going to be Neptune. We're not going to be neighbors. We're not going to be taxpayers because it's all going to go away. You need to be inventive. You need to come to your public. You need to ask them for help, not financial help, for their intelligence because you do produce people that are intelligent. I know, I have two of them. And one of them is a teacher. And Tammy, you know who she is, okay? So that's where I come from. We need to work together, okay? Put your hands like this. You can put them together, and you can put 100 people, and you can save people in the ocean. We don't need to do that. We just need to put our hands together here, you as a board and us as the public. So you can save us so we can help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shonta L. Jackson. I reside at 713 Green Grove Road. For many of you, you may not be aware, but January is School Board Member Recognition Month. So this will lighten the environment. I am coming up here to say thank you to all of the school board members who are sitting before, before me for all that you do for the students, the families, the educators, and administrators of this district. It is a thankless job. You get $0 in remuneration. So if no one told you thank you during the month of January, I am standing here to thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, public comment is now closed.
Are we on the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank the number of residents who are here tonight who have expressed concern. I definitely feel a difference in the tone tonight, which I appreciate. I know the board appreciates that, and we do intend to work together. Secondly, I want to thank the number of staff who are here tonight. These are the people who are on the front lines every single day, and we value their presence here as we celebrate the halfway point in the school year. The '25-'26 school year is halfway over. From our principals, who lead and manage our buildings every day, to our teachers and support staff who work directly with our students and families, we have an amazing group of educators here. I also want to welcome new business administrator Vincent Caravella. What a time to come into Neptune with the taxes the way they are. I want to thank you, Vinnie, for hitting the ground running. Vinnie has been here since January 2nd. He is deep in budget planning. And after my comments, I will ask him to update us on where we are in the budget planning process. And that will be the beginning of how we share that information with you each month. As Ms. Jackson said, January is Board of Education Recognition Month. On behalf of all of the staff and the students, I would like to recognize our Board of Education for their tireless work, their dedication to our students and staff, and their willingness to show up and be present for our many student events. As I have said over the last few months, we did expand our budget task force and held a meeting on January 13th. We invited some community members to that meeting. A representative from Senator Gopel's office joined the meeting via telephone to update the committee on the progress towards school funding reform. Most of you know that the reason we are in this pickle is because of the S-2 legislation in 2018. And as Mr. Muller pointed out, that's when you started to see those incremental increases in your taxes around 2020 or so. Senator Gopal informed us of updates to the charter school legislation, but he was unsuccessful in getting the components of his school funding reform bill passed through the Assembly. He intends to revisit that. We also discussed the purpose of the committee, which was to be ambassadors for the information, for providing feedback and input. The committee was given background of state aid reductions and explanation of the increases in costs that outpaced our savings from cuts, ways we have approached the reductions and the process for cutting staff. We discussed our ongoing discussions with the School Development Authority in regards to possible facilities, lease, or sale. We shared the current restrictions of the SDA because we're an SDA school. We talked about the appraisal of eligible buildings, the potential for closing facilities, and the reverter clauses that are associated with some of our buildings. We corrected some misinformation that had been viewed on social media posts. I do want to take a few minutes to correct some of that information that continues to be noted and shared with me. Let me respond first to the sentiment that has been expressed repeatedly both here and through ongoing social media posts. The statement that the district has done nothing and the district is blaming the high tax increase on a sudden reduction in state aid is not accurate. Since 2018, the district has cut over 100 positions, including teachers, administrators, custodians, maintenance and tech personnel, safety officers, and others. We've closed a school. We've cut an entire K-12 environmental science program, reduced middle school and high school sports and clubs, cut courtesy busing, utilized fund balance, and curtailed spending mid-year each year. In addition to providing testimony to our legislators and advocating for school funding reform, the district has had and continues to have the district has had and continues to have multiple conversations, sometimes conflicting information gained with the School Development Authority to ascertain our ability to sell or lease our buildings. The district has increased taxes incrementally over the last several years. Our work is not done there. Secondly, let me speak to the frequently quoted cited administrative costs, which can be found, and you can look this up yourself. Two thousand twenty-five Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spending, indicator eight. In several documents disseminated through social media, the district per pupil spending on administrative costs was reported at eleven point two percent of its percentage of per pupil spending. The accurate amount is one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine, which is eight point eight percent of the budgetary per pupil cost. Again, you can find that information on your own. You can look it up on your phone right now. Indicator eight. According to the misinformation disseminated, Long Branch's percentage is eight point two. That is not correct. Long Branch is nine point two, higher than Neptune's. In fact, looking at the same guide where districts are categorized by both size and type, Neptune comes in at the second lowest percentage among the K-12 districts of Ocean Wall, Neptune, and Long Branch, just our neighbors. The state average is ten point two percent. We're well below the state average. In these same perpetuated documents, district proficiency in math is reported to have been ten point nine percent. You can find the accurate proficiency rate in the most recently published School Performance Report on the DOE website. That proficiency, I can't say the word proficiency tonight. The proficiency rate is twenty point five, not ten point five. There have been many comments made in our public sessions as well as on so, social media. Often comparisons are made to specific districts that are K-eights or districts that are not similar in size. There are fifty-five districts in Monmouth County. When comparing districts, it's important to first compare by type, K-six, K-eight, K-12, then size, and rate of free and reduced lunch. Adding Long Branch can make sense, even though it's larger because of its demographics. When you compare our proficiency rating to Long Branch's rating, even though it's larger, our ratings are higher in both ELA and math. When you sort the spreadsheet that is contained on the DOE website in the School Performance Report, and you can do this because there's a spreadsheet, you can sort it by free and reduced lunch rates. Comparing proficiency rates to those of similar economic disadvantage rates, we ranked twenty-six out of, twenty-six and thirty in ELA and math respectively out of sixty-five districts. When you analyze those same districts, over four years, we have improved incrementally year over year in both content areas. Prior to coming to Neptune, many of you know that I was superintendent, assistant superintendent, and principal in affluent districts that saw high state standardized tests year over year. Those teachers and those administrators were excellent. I can say that the educators we have here are equally excellent. It is important that we look at multiple metrics when we make these statements, including our proficiency ratings compared to similar districts, compared to state averages, and compared to our wealthier counterparts. I have corrected the misinformation and posted the admin cost of proficiency rating information in the budget box on our website. You can also find the minutes of our meetings and other budget documents. No one wants to receive a higher tax bill, and we certainly don't want to give you one. We agree on that point. We have heard repeatedly that our residents want a return on their investments. We do as well. No one here wants to raise taxes. However, we see returns on investments in the many improvements and successes we've seen over the last ten years that are unrelated to proficiency ratings. We have more students than ever taking advanced placement courses. More students each year earning scores of three or more on those advanced placement tests, earning them college credit. We have robust and award-winning ROTC Visual and Performing Arts. We have a state-recognized deaf ed program. We have multiple pathways to college for our students, including not only our Jump Start Academies, where our students interact with real world professionals, but also our early college high school, first in the county, where students earn an associate's degree at the same time as they earn a high school diploma, first in their families to go to college. We have begun a seal of biliteracy program, and every year we have twenty-five to thirty seniors earning that award. Our early childhood program serves as a model for the state, often hosting visits to, visits from districts who wish to start a program. Our students go on to state colleges, the Brookdale Stars Programs, Trades, and Ivy League universities. All of our students report-
Sir, stop. Stop.
Before.
Stop it. You're out of order, sir. Out of order, sir. Officer, officer, would you please? You don't want to listen.
All of our students report that they are well-prepared for those experiences. Our students win awards and scholarships in science, the arts, writing, and sports. Educators, students, and staff in our district are proud of the work that they do, as I am of them, in ensuring that we provide ample opportunities for our deserving students. We will continue to build a budget that takes into account our residents' concerns over taxes, while at the same time supporting our students' opportunities. Thank you. Mr. Caravella.
Good evening, everybody. Um, remind me never to start a job in the middle of budget season. Okay? Um, I think I can speak for everybody in this room that no one likes to pay taxes. Me myself. So just to walk you through a little bit of the budget process since I've been here on January 2nd. So I literally shared with the budget calendar early on about October. We tried to stick to that budget calendar. When I started, I tried to stick to that budget calendar as well. So where we are right now is I came in, started to talk to all the departments, started to gather information regarding costs, what we're seeing as far as what we can expect for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. The most important thing to do is to really build your revenue base first. Unfortunately, we're, we're fund-based accounting, so we have to have a balanced whole budget. You need to have a balanced budget to submit to the counties for approval. So in order to not inflate your costs, you have to make sure you build your revenues accordingly so you don't overinflate your revenues, because if you do, that means you're spending more than you're actually bringing in. So that's really the first part of where we are trying to tackle. Again, some of the revenues are known. We are at the mercy of the two percent like everybody knows. I know in the previous couple of years, you've been able to claim waivers or claim different aid incentives that the state has provided you, but what we know is we are always at the mercy of the two percent. That is the cap that we adhere to, that's our statute. That is what we're allowed to. I know years ago, you were allowed to go to over the two percent and you would have to get the budget voted on by the, the town level. But ever since then, the statute limitation was put in for the two percent. So that's what we know as far as how much we can go up to on the, on the left side. The other revenues are factored in based off tuition, transportation, jointures. You have your miscellaneous revenue, your interest income. Um, special education and Medicaid initiative is another revenue piece. And then also is the big factors, the state aid. And as Dr. Crater has said, the state aid has gone down drastically since the sunset of S-2, where we're about eight point eight million. So we're hoping that that stays flat within, um, Governor coming in. I know like the last Tuesday is when they usually give their address. They usually are afforded a two-week outlook because they are new for transition purposes. So our state aid may be a little late. But as far as building a budget, I do not believe we're behind the eight ball. Um, in my previous district, this is how we would normally do it as well. Do your enrollment projections, you start meeting your departments in December. And then January is when you really start plugging in and figuring out your revenue base and plugging in the expenses that go with that. With that said, in February, I do plan to give a presentation to the board and publicly basically outline exactly where we are. Sometimes seeing is believing, so sometimes visualization is far better than just talking about it. Give everybody a full picture of an understanding because there's a lot of factors and a lot of pieces that go into building a budget. It's not just, yes, eighty percent of the budget is salaries and benefits, but there are other inner workings that some people may not realize or see that I think everybody just needs to be informed on. Maintaining the buildings, services, programs, transportation for our students at a district tuition that were mandated by, by an IDP. And then all the support services that go along with that IDP. So that's something that I'd like to give to the board in, in February, so that's something that we will put together. So once we get the state aid notice, hopefully that'll be the end of February. Usually we'll bring the board to, um, up to speed of what our state aid notices. I usually like to send out a memo to everybody, uh, letting everybody know. But in March, end of March is usually your tentative budget hearing. I mean, not your hearing, your tentative budget adoption. That is not a final budget. That is just a budget that we have to put forward to the state for the county to approve, in order to meet that statutory deadline. The final budget adoption is at the end of April, beginning of May, I think, May 7th or May is the last day you usually can adopt a budget. So that is the final budget. But you can make changes in according with what we examine, what we submit to the county, leading up to the public hearing. So nothing is final until the public hearing. So I just need everybody to understand that, that when we come to you in March, when it's tentative budget adoption, that's not a final budget. That is just a budget that we are putting forward to the county for approval. Now hopefully in the February meeting, I answer a lot of the questions that people may have regarding where we are with the tax levy. I know someone asked if we can commit to going to the two percent. I'm told all the pieces of the puzzle are in there. I don't want to commit or not commit to two percent or under two percent, but I know we are working tirelessly to not commit to doing what has been happening the last couple of years. Um, and we're working diligently, we work with all the departments. I know we're going to be working with the principals as well just to make a zero-based budget and a sound budget that fits the needs of everyone involved in the district to sustain what we have, but also look to the future and continue to what we have because we have endured a lot of cuts. And I've noticed that, and I've only been here for a month, that you have health benefits costs rising, but your staff member enrollment going down by over a hundred. So I think over the last six years, your health benefit costs have gone, gone up four million, but your total staff has gone on, gone down about ninety staff members. So that, that speaks volumes, that there is just a huge issue that I believe is statewide when it comes to health benefits. I mean, some of the costs that I have, really every New Jersey school district faces, whether it be your, your utility costs, your electric utility costs are increasing. Where are the two percent? We're getting seven to ten percent. Your special ed tuition costs are anywhere from four to ten percent. Because we get the tuition rates from the private schools that we send to and we're based to send to from an IDP standpoint. Um, cost of charter school seems to be flat, but that's also a good sign. Charter school costs are coming down. That means students are either phasing off, they're actually coming back into the Neptune school district. Our property and casualty insurance is a fourteen percent estimate. Transportation costs, I believe the CPI has set the three point five seven percent, which means that all the vendors can go up way above the two percent that we're at the mercy to. So they can go up to three point five seven percent or not renew, and then really gouges when we have to go out to bid for additional transportation. Again, also it's negotiation shit. We have to build that into effect because you do not want to shorten the budget by not anticipating what your increases can be for salary. Um, and then the big one is the health benefits. I know I don't have to, have to beat the dead horse, but health benefits has gotten up over a compounded fifty-something percent over the last two, three years. We run our claims experience every year. We see where it's at. We know we have to provide people to a better coverage. And we see if anybody will shop us, but no one will ever take that on because of the, the loss ratio of our health benefits. So right now, we're stuck in the state health benefit plan, but we also have to, have to plan accordingly. I believe the state's going to offer a waiver again that you could tag on to the two percent. That's more information we'll provide to you, but at this time, we're not even remotely thinking about taking that. We're trying to stay within the two percent cap that we're allowed in. Um, I've spoken enough, so. If anybody has any questions, again, feel free to.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hubbard, can you move our superintendent's report, please?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent, under superintendent's report per document A, item one through twelve, so moved.
Second. Been moved in second by Ms. Jones? Uh, Ms. Jones? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Purrier?
Aye.
Madam President?
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman, can you move our finance report?
Sure. Sorry, I lost my voice today. So, um, be it resolved, the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under finance. As per document B1, items one through nine, so moved.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Hoffman, in seconded by Mr. West. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Madam President?
Uh, Sharika, could you please move our transportation?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under transportation as per document B3, items one, two, three.
Second.
Been moved by Sharika and seconded by Mr. Hubbard. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Morgan, for Education Special Projects.
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved recommendations by the superintendent under Education slash Special Projects as per document C1, item one, so moved.
Second. Been moved by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Jones? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Madam President?
Mr. West, can you move our special education agenda?
Thank you, Madam President. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under special education as per document C2, item one, so moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. West, seconded by Ms. Thompson. A roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Madam President?
Uh, Ms. Thompson, can you move our student activities?
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under student activities as per document C3, items one through two, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. West. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye. Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Madam President?
Uh, Ms. Jones, can you move our personnel items, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under personnel as per document D1, items one through twenty, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Jones, in seconded by Mr. Hubbard. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Madam President?
Mr. Hubbard, can you move our schedule of meetings, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved item recommended by the superintendent under document Z, so moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Hubbard, seconded by Ms. Jones. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Madam President?
Do we have any old business? Any new business?
I have new business, Ms. Purrier. Um, I'm a little concerned about the calendar, given that it's early in the winter and we've already had one snow closure. And I'm hearing another storm coming. So my request is that I have permission to, if I have to flip the February thirteenth, don't get too excited, teachers, um, PD Day to Kid Day, so that we could have an abbreviated Student Day that day, half PD, half student, if I need it. And then we can approve it retroactively at the February meeting. So as, as long as I have- So as, as long as I have permission to do that.
Permission for me, anyone?
Anybody have any objections?
Anyone? No objections?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Thompson, is moved by, agreement? Moved.
Second, I'm sorry.
Moved and seconded, and if everybody?
Aye? Aye. Aye.
I would love to come.